Good evening. I would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for May the 19th, 2014. I'd like to remind everybody, if you have a mobile device, a cellphone, or any other device, if you'll make sure it's on silent or vibrate. This is a live meeting that's broadcast on Channel 22 tonight, and we would appreciate it if your phones don't go off during the meeting. We are going to start with a presentation of colors from Boy Scout Troop 128, Epworth United Methodist Church, if you'll please rise.
Collard, post the colors. Collard, reform. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to welcome to our podium Pastor Scott Davis with Pitts Baptist Church in Concord to provide our invocation, and also, I'd like to ask that after the invocation, please remain standing because we're going to do a moment of silence. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for the invitation. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you for this meeting tonight. God, we thank you for the commissioners. And, Lord, we know that you know the needs in their lives, and you know the trials that they face. And, God, we would ask you tonight to supply their needs according to your riches and glory in Christ Jesus. Lord, give wisdom tonight in this meeting. You're the wonderful counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, and the Prince of Peace. Lord, we want to pray for these leaders as they make decisions for this community. We know they have a very important role in the stewardship of the resources of this county. And so, God, we pray for them. We pray for this county. We pray for the families, for the good of the families and the citizens of Cabarrus County. Lord, may your protection be upon us. Lord, we ask you to prosper our land, and we know that according to Deuteronomy, Chapter 8, that will only happen as we recognize you and remember you and reflect on all the blessings that you've brought upon us. God, we would ask that you would turn our hearts to you and to your word once again in this land. Lord, we would ask that we would not lean upon our own understanding, but that in all of our ways, that we would acknowledge you and that we would make choices according to what you have instructed to us in your word. Lord, forgive us for all of our sins, for all of our shortcomings. Be with all of those in our county who serve and protect us. God, strengthen them and protect them. Lord, again, we thank you for your grace that you have so freely bestowed upon us, and may each of us live our lives to bring you honor and glory. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
At this time, I would ask that you all join us in a moment of silence. For those of us that have been in Concord for a very long time, we would remember Dr. Franklin Niblock died recently. He was a county commissioner from 1994 to 1998. He was also a chairman of the Board of Adjustment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I remember Dr. Niblock very fondly as a little girl having to go to the doctor and get stitches in my hand. But he was an excellent pediatrician. He was well-loved in the community. He did a lot of good work, not only as a commissioner, but just as a citizen of Cabarrus County. And I'd also like for you to remember, though I apologize I don't have the name, there was a fatality over on Morehead Road out at Speedway this weekend, a motorcyclist. So, I'd also like for you to keep that family in your prayers tonight. So, if you will, please join me for a moment of silence in remembrance of Dr. Franklin Niblock and also the motorcyclist. Thank you all. Okay. At this time, we would like to ask the Boy Scouts to please come forward. I'd like for you to tell us your name and what grade you're in and what school you go to, and then I'd like to ask, what do you like about being a scout? And then, if you will, go to your left, my right. Commissioner Burridge has a pen for you. So, welcome and thank you.
My name is Aiden Stiles. I'm in eighth grade. I go to Winkler Middle School. I love the camp and the hike and, you know, everything you got to do with scouts. It's all very fun.
Great. Thank you. Hey, you can pull it down.
My name is Joey Stiles. I am in seventh grade at Winkler Middle School, and I love everything about scouting.
Thank you. You can pull it down again. That's what I have to do because I'm short.
My name is Robert Conley, and I go to Fair Elementary, and I'm in fifth grade, and I like all the friends in Boy Scouts.
Thank you. You can pull it back up.
My name's Chris Conley, and I'm Assistant Scout Master of Troop 128. We made out at Epworth Methodist, and I just enjoy scouting in general.
My name is Scott Stiles. I'm Assistant Scout Master, and I get to be a boy again.
Nothing wrong with that, right? Thank you all very much. We do appreciate you coming tonight and presenting our colors for us. Okay, commissioners, the first thing that we have on our agenda is approval or correction of the minutes. So, at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda, including changes on page 278. That's your note.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to move F3 off of the consent agenda to the new business.
One second. F3, update of capital projects and special revenue fund budgets, that one?
Yes.
Let me make sure I have the right one. Okay. So, we will put that, let's do it as six, and we'll move six to seven because that's how we need to finish up with that one. If that's okay with everybody? So, you made that in form of a motion, correct?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And next, we have recognitions and presentations. Kasha is here with our first one to recognize Cabarrus County Government 101. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, 15 residents participated in the new county government 101 experience. The class introduced citizens to the Cabarrus County Sheriff EMS and Emergency Management Operations. The day included canine officer demonstrations, tours, emergency management drills, land search training, and a live EMS exercise. I'd like to thank the staff who helped me put this event together, especially Sergeant Sarah Price and David Baxter. I'd also like to thank the board and executive staff for your support of community outreach programs that help us establish and build relationships with our residents. And I don't think I saw any of our class participat-- oh, come on up here. All right, we've got Jerome Jennings here, and perhaps he'd like to share a few words about his experience.
Thank you for having me. Thank Kasha for putting together such a great program. Sort of new to the county, but I learned so much. It's a beautiful building across the street. There was a guy in our class who admitted that he was opposed to that building being built, and he actually came to the class and enjoyed it. And I just want to thank you guys for allowing us to learn more about county government, how things work. I got to meet some of you guys at the Winkler Middle School when you guys all were on the stage, and that was pretty cool. Thank you for welcoming me to Cabarrus County. I've only been here about four years, but I found a home. Thank you. Thank you, Kasha.
And I'd just like to quickly say we're starting to plan our next government 101 class, which is going to focus on our county's environmental activities, and hopefully that will take place in August. Thank you.
And you have that on the website if somebody's interested?
If you go to the website and go to countygovernment101, it should pull up, and we'll have information as it's updated.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, next, Robert is here. Robert Fur is here, and a number of very well-dressed young men and women to recognize our youth council.
Yes, ma'am, and I would like for them to stand and come up here next to the podium, please. Good evening. It's a pleasure to stand before you again and to recognize the Cabarrus County Youth Council members, and in particular, our graduating members who will be graduating in just a few weeks from high school and moving on to the next part of their life. Before I do that, though, I just want to talk a little bit about who we are, and then I have our chair, Stephen Larson, will come up and share a couple of remarks, and then they have a token of appreciation I'd like to share with you. And then, after that, we are going to move out to the multipurpose room for our end-of-the-year banquet. So, if you see a mass exodus of parents and young people leaving, it's not for any other reason, but they want to eat. We do meet at the Cooperative Extension Office. I've been working with this youth council since September, and their meetings mirror your meetings. They have a work session that follows your work session the following Monday, and then they have a business session that follows your business session. And they actually review your agendas for any items that may pertain to youth, whether it's with the schools or parks and libraries, and have open discussion about those topics and those types of things, and have an opportunity to understand what your role is as a commissioner and how you can address those kinds of topics when they come to you. We currently have six vacancies on our board and are working to get those filled, and after we have our graduation that happens, we will have quite a few more. And so, our group is busy now recruiting new members, and we will have a slate of new folks to bring before you at the June meeting so that we can refill our board and be ready to move forward in the next school year. So, before we move and have Stephen make a presentation, I do want to announce who are and recognize our graduating seniors. Here to my left is our chair, Stephen Larson. Stephen is a senior at Cox Mill High School, and he has served on our board since June of 2012, so he's served two years. He has been admitted to and will be attending the United States Air Force Academy, and he is going to pursue a bachelor's in economics and a bachelor's in political science. And next to Stephen is Katil Amakan, and Katil just graduated from the early college at Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and she will be attending the University of North Carolina at Charlotte, and she will be receiving, working towards a degree in financial mathematics. It's an exciting career. And standing next to her is Brianna Meisenheimer, and Brianna is a senior at Hickory Ridge High School, and Brianna will be attending Appalachian State University this fall, and she is exploring options in computer science and in psychology. And then, next to them, we also have our vice chair, Michael Walker. Michael is a student at Cox Mill High School. Next to him is Keely Curry. Keely is our secretary, and she is a student at Central Cabarrus High School. And next to her is Sophia Politis, and Sophia is a student at Hickory Ridge High School. So, I'd like to turn this over to Stephen, please.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you very much for this opportunity to attend and speak at this meeting. My name is Stephen Larson, and I'm the president of the Cabarrus County Youth Council. We, my commissioners, my fellow members, and I would like to share with you all of our hard work and our plans for the future of the youth council. This year, we were able to view the Cabarrus County Schools Student Satisfaction Survey. After reading the results, we decided that we wanted to investigate how we can make school more enjoyable and engaging for these students. In order to be more effective, we would like to work more closely with the student councils at these local high schools, and as a result, we think that we would have a more direct line of communication with these student bodies. Additionally, our vice president even proposed support of a presidential youth council to the board earlier this year. The future of the Cabarrus County Youth Council is bright. We would like to continue our involvement through participating in the community service, extending our outreach, and raising more awareness of our activities and our purpose. I believe that this year, the Cabarrus County Youth Council truly explored our options, and now that we have a clear and defined mission, I'm very excited to see what these members will do next year. To express our gratitude, we would like to offer the Board of Commissioners these pastries. We do not know what we would do without you. Thank you very much for this opportunity to attend tonight, and I hope that you all have a good evening.
Well, I guess I can say, since you guys are going to go, thank you very much. Since you're going to go down the hallway and have dinner, at least we know that after our meeting, we'll all be able to have a nice sweet treat. This is very nice of you to share with us tonight. Thank you all very much. Hey, next, I'm going to call Sarah. I see Sarah Piper. Yep, there you are. And Dennis, are you coming up too? Okay, just Sarah. Soil and Water Conservation District, recognition of regional and state winners.
Good evening. Conservation education is one of four strategic priorities for Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District. The district has a long and proud history of conservation education accomplishments. During the district's 50th anniversary year celebration, three individual students and three teams advanced to state-level competitions. This year, only the fourth student in the 23-year history of the conservation poster contest won the first place at the state level. And I'm going to recognize some of our winners that we had. Shania Mastin won first place in Area 8 at the annual computer design slideshow contest for sixth graders. Malia Eaton won first place in our area for the seventh-grade public speaking contest. Cheyenne Connor won second place at the area contest in eighth-grade public speaking. We also had a seventh-place Southern Piedmont Envirethon team, and they were the environmentalists from Cannon School under Lee Freer as the advisor. Those members were Chloe Winchester, Grace Winchester, Hannah Schifert, Joey Carroll, and Jonah Presser, and they were in the middle school team. And then, we had a high school team, and they, this team tied for eighth place at the state contest, and they were the SNB Llamas, and they were Callie Malika, Cassidy Rindox, Lindsay Turbifill, Mimi Wahid, who had the high score of the forestry category in high school, and Soima Ava and Camille Harvey. And then, there was another team in high school from Cannon School that got fourth place at the Southern Piedmont, which is the area, and they were the Mythical Chimeras, and they were Liz Wahid, Stephanie Williams, Logan Foster, Aspen Stevanowski, Angela Paffenbach, and Joanna Copia, and I'm sorry if I messed up any of their names. And then, finally, we had the first-place poster contest in the state for fifth grade, like I mentioned earlier, and that was Chloe Winchester. And I think she wants to say a couple of words.
Hello, my name's Chloe Winchester, and I'd like to thank you all for all the recognition and the wonderful opportunity to participate. I learned a lot from the poster, and I plan to participate in it next year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a presentation of Eagle Scout project. Mike Sims, Aiden Stiles, there you are. Good to have you back with us to present this.
First, I would like to thank you guys for allowing me to come out here and show you my project. I'd like to-- My name's Aiden Stiles. I'm from Troop 128. I'm an Eagle Scout candidate. I've been working on Eagle Scout for probably four or five months now, and I just recently finished my project on the 12th of April, and I was going to show you a little bit about my project. Well, first of all, the requirement for a project is you have to lead, you have to lead a service project that will be helpful to any beneficiary in your community. You have to lead it. You have to plan it. You have to develop it, and you have to do all this while you're a live scout. So, I chose an animal shelter just because I have a passion for dogs. I have two of them at my house, as you can see in my slideshow. One's a yellow lab. He's a purebred, and the other's a lab mix. The Rooster and Warner Shelter, they have a no-kill policy, and that is something that I cherish. I love it because, you know, every time I hear about a dog that's being put down, it just, you know, it hits me in my heart because dogs don't need to be put down because they're just, you know, they're dogs. I love them. And plus, the shelter was new. We were looking around for shelters to visit and, you know, talk to about an Eagle Scout project, and this one just popped up, and it's actually closer than the other one that's on 49, I believe. And it's new, and I just, I love challenges, you know? It's just always fun to have a nice challenge. Okay, so, when I talked to Mr. Sims, he, you know, gave me some idea. We created a list of ideas that we needed at the shelter. One of them were like water pipes because inside of the shelter, they have a bunch of kennels and stuff, and instead of manually, you know, filling the water chugs up and stuff like that for the dogs, you know, maybe we could create some water pipe or something to easily, you know, get the water to the dogs, or we could create more kennels wherever we had the space, or we could, you know, get in the backyard. We could make a seating area if they're going to, if the possible adoptionees are going to, you know, watch the dogs run around and stuff, and a little walkway out to the backyard from, you know, the doors, the side doors and the back doors. Well, I, oops. First, I had to do some fundraising for my project. I participated in a local fundraiser at the Speedway Club. It was little, it was like a spaghetti dinner. It was called Spaghetti, hence the dogs and stuff. Yeah, I got to raise some money there, and I accepted some, you know, private donations and stuff. I talked to different companies. Papa John's gave me a discount on their pizzas and stuff like that, so it was good. So, I chose to do the backyard seating area, and as you can see on this picture, that's what they had before, and it's ugly. I was real honest with the man. I said, "It's ugly. I don't like it. I want to change it." You know, the pavers in the back, they're just, they're not placed right, and I didn't like them. You know, there's no grass in the back. There's no real neat seating area because the plastic chairs, they're just, they're chewed up big time, and we actually threw them away, which made me happy. Major drainage problems. As you can see, there's, you know, puddles of mud and all that sort of stuff. Well, all right, so here are some of the workdays. As you can see in the top-left picture, that's me and my father. We were creating the benches, or the bench tops for the whole project or whatever. It's a bench top made out of concrete. We poured it ourselves. It was the idea of my grandfather. He's an architect, and he said that it would be a lot easier and cheaper to pour the benches and stuff, and, you know, I was looking for something cheap that I could do because it was a lot easier than using my money. But we had to install a gate because, as you can see in the bottom of the picture, we had some, one come in and do some grading because we need to level out the area and add some dirt here and there. So, yeah, that's the picture of me working on the fence and stuff. And so, here are the workdays where we started putting it all together. The top-left is Mike Sims. That's his wife. She was there, and we were talking, and, you know, something she didn't like, we'd change, you know, stuff like that. We came across some problems, you know, with the edging, which is the black stuff that the person's holding in the bottom right. We had to, you know, put it in the shape of a bone because that's what my project was going to be. It was going to be a bone made out of white rock and then bone-shaped benches inside the rock with a tree in the middle. We had to lay sod down and stuff like that, but we managed to overcome all the problems that, you know, occurred and stuff like that, and had a lot of boys come out. I had kids from my lacrosse team that I play for and also from my scout troop, so I had a lot of people come out and help, which was great. I needed all the people I could get. So, this was our final product, and it went exactly how I planned it. Mr. Sims loved it. Everyone loved it. Everyone who worked, they, it was amazing. Mr. Sims, he, I could tell he loved it. He just talks about it every day. Calls it his little park, so. I do want to say something about the shelter. There are a lot of dogs in there that are cute, that are just, they're cute. You need to go in there yourself and see them. There are so many dogs in there that I just can't explain how many people I want to go in there just to help out, adopt a dog here and there. We need all the help we can get. So, if you could just spread the word, all of you, to anyone you know who might want a dog or something, these dogs, they're beautiful. They're well-behaved and stuff like that, so thank you for your time.
Well, I want to tell you that when I was reading what your project was, it's Mr. Sims, now, not too, too long ago, I used to have a kennel. So, when I saw your project, and I just thought, that was amazing to think of, to do it in the shape of the dog bone and everything else, and it's just absolutely gorgeous. So, I think you've done an excellent job with your project, and I'm certain that everybody over there is very appreciative of it. Do you want to say anything?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Aiden. He's done a phenomenal job. He's an awesome young man, as you guys can see. Incredible. I'm biased, yes, but I love this young man. We've come to know each other. His father, Scott, please stand. Scott Stiles is a stand-up guy, and that's where he gets it from. His parents are phenomenal folks. They've done a great job with him. We appreciate your time. I know you guys are very busy tonight getting all the other things out of the way, but this is very important. Aiden has spoken to you guys from his heart, and I too speak from my heart, and I appreciate your time. Appreciate it, Aiden. I welcome each and every one of you guys to come out. It's phenomenal. I've told Aiden a number of times, there's a lot of Eagle Scouts that come through here with their projects. There's a lot of projects that you'll see just out, you know, read about in the paper, see it in a church, see it, you know, in a community. I encourage you to come see this. This thing is phenomenal. Just the fact, he went out and partnered with his family, other folks, and came up with this idea. This is not something I said, "Hey, do this." We talked, as he said, many things we talked about, and he went away, and this is what he came up with. And it does. It's in the shape of a bone. They landscaped so there's no drainage. They put the rocks out there, very nice, and then landscaped it with the sod. It's phenomenal. We were going to put a dogwood. That was our first thought. Aiden went and talked to a Christie's Nursery, Miss Christie, and she loves him too. So, anybody who wants to know Aiden, talk to Miss Christie because she loves Aiden. Anyway, she suggested the red--
Weeping red bud.
Red bud. And because why?
Because the leaves are in the shape of a heart.
And they are. The tree has come out. It's phenomenal. The tree, it's just like Aiden. The tree is just like Aiden. It came in with two leaves on it today. It's just blooming with leaves, just like this young man. I appreciate you guys. I won't continue because if you let me, I'll talk all night. Aiden, thank you very much. Good job. And thank you, guys.
And I think all of us and everybody in the county is very appreciative of what the Humane Society is doing and what you're doing out there to help us. I think the best dogs that you can adopt are ones that you get from a kennel, from a Humane Society, from any entities like that, and we appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. Thank you. Okay, I had to get to the right page. As I'm sure everybody knows, that next week, this coming weekend, or a week from today, is Memorial Day. And Commissioners, we have a Memorial Day proclamation. Whereas across the great, this great country, America, will join on May 26, 2014, to honor her fallen heroes of the armed forces. And whereas Memorial Day was first proclaimed a national holiday in 1868 to pay homage to those who answered the call to defend the principles on which our nation was founded. And whereas throughout the course of generations, both at home and on foreign soil, men and women in uniform have sacrificed for the promise of freedom, the preservation of our values and the ideals of democracy. And whereas men and women in uniform have paid for our liberty with their lives, we hold in remembrance their selflessness with deepest honor and respect, and are indebted to their memories for the valiant and honorable path of service they followed. And whereas we share in the sorrow with and express our support to the families who also sacrificed greatly for their fellow citizens as they gave up their sons and daughters to serve our country and to search for a day when peace will abound. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Memorial Day, May 26, 2014, in recognition of the men and women in uniform who have made the supreme sacrifice, and further urge all citizens to pause for a moment of silence at noon on May 26, 2014, to honor and to reflect on the memory of our fallen heroes of the armed forces. Commissioners, at this time, I accept a motion for us to adopt this proclamation.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Also want to just remind everybody, this week is EMS week. So if you see any of our EMTs out and about, please stop them and thank them for all the hard work that they do also. Okay, Commissioners, next we have informal public comments. I have a few yellow cards. First, I'd like to call Price Crutchfield. How about if I call you Price Crutchfield? Will that work?
I'll consider that. Never mind. I, I want to talk about something pretty serious here. I tried to speak to the chief of police over here in Concord the last couple of days, last couple of weeks, actually. He hasn't been able to return my phone calls. And, you know, I was having a hard time figuring out why. Anyway, I finally had to talk to the city manager, Brian Hyatt, and to his credit, he did the professional and right thing and mandated that the chief of police return my phone calls. And in fact, give me an appointment to speak. Anyway, I spoke to the chief of police, that what I thought was going to be a man-to-man conversation, but it was a man to several men. On his end, it's like an entourage of Gestapo agents. On my end, it's one person. I was concerned about the way I was treated at City Council. A couple of months ago, I was over there speaking out about a situation where the police, you know, we've had this rash of law enforcement people involved in horrendous crimes against kids. I think we're all concerned about kids' safety. But anyway, I was speaking out about the police over here in Charlotte taking pictures of underage naked girls. And I was telling all the police officers over there about this, and they seemed very antisocial and uncommunicative. They didn't want to speak to me, and they were being very arrogant. And I would have thought they would have been, you know, supportive of my efforts to, you know, keep the kids safe. And I was running out of city hall over there. One of the police officers came up to me as I was finished speaking. "Sir, the meeting's over. You need to leave." And he got in my personal space and forced me out of the building, hoping that I would do something he could construe as aggressive or, you know, for some reason to arrest me. I've been arrested 17 times. I've never harmed anybody. But, but, but this is ridiculous in the so-called land of the free. Concord is supposed to be harmony, not chaos. And it's not supposed to be a place where you've got a bunch of Gestapo agents. I, I got arrested for cussing on the sidewalk. I said the S-word one time, an expletive, to the police. They got their feelings hurt, and you know and I know, the police have never said the S-word on the sidewalk, much less arrested for it. And we've got a lot of unsolved murders in the Concord, Cabarrus County area. I think it's in the double digits, actually. And I think it's time for the police to spend a little more time on these horrendous crimes and a little less time on the S-word on the sidewalk, when no private citizen complains whatsoever. And by the way, I'm proud of the S-word. I want to be like Putin and be against cussing on the sidewalk. But it seems the Concord police are in harmony with President Putin. They don't want no more cussing. Can't have that. But, yeah, again, on a more serious note, I'm for the safety of the kids. And when I can't talk about the police doing things that are criminally harmful to kids without the fear, you know, of being arrested or told that I'm disruptive or I'm disorderly, and all this stuff I've had to experience. God bless America.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Doust.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. My name is Tom Doust. I've lived in Cabarrus County for 17 years, and I've served on the GOP Executive Board for 10 years. I'll keep my remarks brief. I'd like to address my remarks primarily to Mr. Osterreich, who is the newest of our county commissioners, having been appointed by the Cabarrus County GOP Executive Board, as per the rules for filing for the unexpired term of a commissioner who resigns. I know that Mr. Osterreich prides himself on being a representative of the people and that he always keeps the will of the people uppermost in his mind. And in light of that, and in consideration of the results of the recent primary election, I believe the will of the people is very clear. Plainly and clearly, the GOP Executive Board made a bad judgment in appointing Mr. Osterreich to his current position. And the voters spoke that message loud and clear on May 6. I'd like to suggest that Mr. Osterreich resign immediately and permit the GOP Executive Board to appoint in his place the person with the largest number of votes in the recent primary. And that person would be Diane Honeycutt. Naturally, this is not required of you, which makes it simply the honorable thing to do. But in doing so, I think we'll accomplish a few things. Number one, it will allow the commission to move forward immediately with far fewer distractions and arguments, as has been the general atmosphere since your arrival. Two, I think it would permit the school board to do its work without being intimidated for trying to do their job. I think it would bring a bit of harmony, cooperation, and trust that has been sadly missing from the chamber. And finally, I think it'll be an important step toward restoring the confidence that Cabarrus County Republicans once had in their executive board. Let's start the healing process tonight. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Next, I have Anita Brown.
Good afternoon. Madam Chairwoman Poole, Commissioners, Mr. Downs, and the county staff. I appreciate the opportunity to express sincere appreciation to each one of you. I can't see without these, so. For your service to our community. Public service is often called a thankless job that many of us shy away from, while frequently voicing our dissatisfaction, complaining, and calling for change. On some occasions, however, the citizens wake up to what's happening and remember that they do, in fact, have the power to make change. As I see it, this is what's happened here with our Cabarrus County Commission election. It's clear that the voters in this primary were not supportive of the direction the current commission has headed and have chosen new leadership with the promise of a preferred new direction for our county. Election timing issues now cause us to have to wait until December of 2014 to seat the newly-elected commissioners. I urge each of you who will be vacating your seat to consider the concerns of all of those whom you represent and look to yourselves as you exercise the remainder of your terms. The voters desire, expect, and deserve a different demeanor from their leaders, which includes mutual respect, cooperation, trustworthiness, and truth. The recent bitterness, accusations, attempts at manipulation have created a hostile and stressful environment which has disrupted the governing of our county and has discredited all who have engaged in those tactics. The true character of a man is most, is best exemplified and evaluated by his response to adversity or defeat. Graciously accepting the will of the electorate, congratulating those elected, carefully respecting and safeguarding the integrity, the policies, and the traditions of our community, its resources, and its citizens, will model for all positive leadership and promote healing in our community. I hope that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robert Simmons.
Thank you. I was told by John.
Excuse me. You may want to pull that microphone up just a little bit. You're a little bit taller than.
I'm so loud.
I want to make sure that you get, you get on there. Thank you.
I was told by John Cook that you were not responding to a complaint that I had filed about corruption at the Department of Social Services bigotry and things like that, and that they wanted something in writing. So I now have something in writing, four pages. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. Basically, I'm asking that Tricia Baker resign as civil rights officer of Cabarrus County. I'm also asking that Ben Rose and Tricia Baker be fired from the Department of Social Services. And I'm going to try to make you understand that in this letter. Mrs. Baker was involved in a scam with the Community Care Program of Southern Piedmont, which is basically scamming $5 million from the state of North Carolina. If you go down to the Community Care Program of Southern Piedmont, to the Community Free Clinic, and you watch, you'll see that there's never anybody in the lobby. Almost no one shows up to be treated. They do use a pharmacy where they are given free drugs donated to them by pharmaceutical companies or wherever. Now, I have a letter here, a document from the Department of Social Services, which states, quote, "Effective today, DSS will no longer be able to determine eligibility for the CCP program. All new and existing clients, please call the free clinic for appointments and further information." Now, this is good news. I succeeded in actually accomplishing something. They no longer have to go through that bigoted organization, being treated really badly, trying to get on a charity care program that doesn't want to treat them in the first place. However, this raises a question. The question is, how is it that Mrs. Baker could get involved in this kind of scam without being fearful of losing her job? Without Ben Rose getting involved and chastising her? Unless, of course, he agreed to allow her to do this? And why would Ben Rose and Mrs. Baker get involved in this scam unless they knew that if they were exposed, somebody in the county in a position of power would make certain that they didn't get fired? Now, I realize that that hospital is a major employer in this county, and they have a lot of power. We're not even, again, trying to talk to police officers, captains and such about the problems over there. They cringe. They're afraid of losing their job. And that's a lot of power when a police captain is scared to death for you to tell them about something going on. So I have a four-page complaint here. I am asking that you actually research to see if I'm full of crap or if I'm telling you something that you need to look into. See, there, there's conservatives on this board that claim that they care about the waste of tax dollars. Well, there's an organization that's definitely wasting tax dollars, the Community Care Program of Southern Piedmont. In fact, the Community Free Clinic, which is the one where you get treated by that organization, their headquarters, their office building was used for the Obama reelection campaign headquarters. That alone should show you how corrupt and dishonest they are.
Thank you. Hey, those are the, those are all the yellow cards that I have. And can you pass those down to Megan for me? Thank you, Jason. Okay, Commissioners, the next thing that we have is the consent agenda. Item number three has been moved to new business, so at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, next, under new business, the first item is, I don't know if, Rich, if you're going to talk about it or if you want me to. We need to hold a public hearing on behalf of Cabarrus Charter Academy in order for them to fulfill the requirements of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Codes of 1986 in regards to the issuance of charter school revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority. Commissioners, we've done this before. I don't know if anybody has any questions of Rich, or do you want to add anything?
Madam Chair, I think that a representative of that entity is to be here tonight. Is Brandon Lofton in the chamber?
Yes.
You're welcome to come up to the microphone. Is that what you?
Yes.
If there's any information you want to share before we hold the public hearing?
I'm not sure there's, there's much to add, but the school is seeking financing for tax-exempt bond financing that'll help them acquire their, refinance the acquisition of their existing facilities. It's being issued through the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin. As you're familiar with with tougher hearings, it's a requirement for tax exemption for there to be the opportunity for people to come and voice their opinions about the financing. And so we appreciate you guys hosting this, this hearing. And of course, it does not in any way obligate the county or the county's credit at all. But we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Can you tell me the address of Cabarrus Charter Academy? Do you know it offhand?
I think it is 355 Poplar Crossing Drive Northwest.
Okay. I didn't know the actual, I know where it is. I just didn't know what the address was, so, okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, so at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak for or against this issue of the Cabarrus Charter Academy fulfilling their requirement in regards to the issuance of charter school revenue bonds? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Okay, and this says that we need to have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the bonds. Okay, Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the bonds?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, the next item, Susie Morris, do you want to come and speak on this first before we do the public hearing?
Good evening. What you have in front of you is the proposed street name change that we discussed for Bonanza Drive. Bonanza was originally one street, but at some point was split into two separate sections that dead-end. So that split is causing problems with our emergency response. So we need to rectify the situation, and how we are proposing to do that is that the addresses on Bonanza Drive will be changed to Wagon Wheel so that it is one complete street, and then Bonanza will enter from a different street that currently exists. Hopefully, you all received the email to answer the questions you had at the work session. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have, and we will need to hold a public hearing for this.
Commissioners, do any of you have questions? I mean, we talked about this at the work session. Okay, then let me, at this time, I'll open a public hearing for Planning and Development E911 Addressing Services Proposed Street Name Change. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, at this time, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance to change the street name for a part of Bonanza Drive to Wagon Wheel Lane. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And Susie, yes, sir?
I would like to go back to number one right quick and let the citizens know that these bonds are not issued by Cabarrus County. They do not cost Cabarrus County anything. Isn't that correct? I just want to let the people know that in case they put out a letter next week, Senate, I bought a charter school for the county.
You did not do that. You're right. None of us did. Thank you. Susie, do you want to come up for the next one again? Proposed text amendments to zoning ordinance, and we will have to hold a public hearing on this also.
That's correct. If you remember, at the work session, we discussed this in detail. So what you have in front of you, Chapter 2, the definitions did not change. In Chapter 8, we did remove the language that had to do with the bond. There was also one edit that our attorney made. That is in the second to the last. That is in the second to the last paragraph. That sentence will now read, "Any solar facility that ceases to produce energy on a continuous basis for 12 months will be considered abandoned, and the property owner and other legally responsible party shall be required to decommission the site unless substantive evidence is provided to the zoning administrator." That was a legal change that was requested, so we did add that change in. There are no changes to the second page in Chapter Eight where we were dealing with the cell towers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Suzy, do we have any applicants right now that are pending for solar farm use?
We do not. We have had several calls about, about it. There was a, an entity that submitted for an approval with the state as far as starting the process with the state and getting the license, or the approvals required with Duke power to sell the energy back. But as far as any type of a planning and zoning approval or any type of application, we have not received any.
And just the one thing that I want to make sure of is that if somebody has, you know, expressed an interest in doing this, we're not changing the ordinance on them halfway through their planning. But do you have any, any serious interest in any of these solar farm uses at the moment?
We have not had a, a complete submission turned in to us. You know, again, we've had a lot of interest. We've had folks that have said, well, here is my submittal, but it's not a complete submittal, and then never came back to our office. So we do not have anybody that turned anything in or paid any fees as far as the conditional use process application at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we do need to hold a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing concerning text amendments to zoning ordinance text 2014-00005. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, at this time, we need a motion to approve proposed changes to Chapter Two and Chapter Eight of the Cabarrus County zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item we have, Ann Wilson, are you going to come up for this? Contribution to the Workers' Compensation Fund. Thanks.
We talked about it at the work session, and it wound up here on the, the new business agenda. The request was for a budget amendment to be approved to move funds from the Internal Service Fund portion of the fund balance into the Workers' Comp Fund, the self-insured fund of $981,000. Does anyone have any other questions?
Commissioners, any questions on this item?
I would say my preference is still to deal with this in 20 days in terms of our budget. I, I know that this $981,000 is for this current year. There's a second part of this that is then funding the program approximately $300,000 recurring funding in FY 15, an additional $460,000 in FY 16. Being that it does have that two-year long-term implication, I would like to look at that in terms of our overall budget. And so I would make a motion to table this so that we can look at it in terms of our budget.
Can I ask for a clarification on that since you mentioned that? In, okay, in this, are you asking for the, the $981 coming out of this budget, and then you're saying that the other two parts will be in the budget process?
Yeah, that's, that's the way the five-year plan is in the budget that you're getting later today, but this is dealing just with the $981.
And the reason I asked was clarification because I agree that if it's in 15 and 16, that should be part of the budget process. And so I wanted to clarify and make sure I understood what you were asking for. So what they're asking for is the $981 that would come out of current funds. And she is saying the other two would be discussed in, in the regular budget process.
Because we're going to be-
I just was making sure that's what she meant.
Absolutely. That's a fair point, Chairman. Is there any urgency required to this $981,000, or could we wait 30, 30 days to deal with it?
I'm okay with whatever schedule you prefer.
If, if we wait and do it in the budget process, well, let me, let me ask it, let me rephrase and ask it this way. If we do it, talk about it again in the budget process, then, and I'd also direct this back towards you. For the $981, would you, if you table it, would you table it so we could put it in June so that it would come out of the current budget?
That's what I'd do.
Because we don't want that part to go to the next year's budget. Then it impacts that money that we can't use. So that's why I was making sure of it's clarified.
I will amend my motion to table this into our June meeting, and then we will have gone through the budget process and be able to more adequately look at that $981,000.
Okay. Okay, does everybody understand? I just want to make sure everybody's with me on the motion. So we have a motion to table this item until our June meeting, once we have gone, as you just said, once we've gone through the budget process. Do I have a second for the motion to table?
What difference does it make whether it's done now or whether it's done next month? Does it have to be, the $981,000 has to be paid, correct, to somebody?
Well, the balance in the Workers' Comp Fund is below what they recommend we have. And as part of our year-end procedures, when we look at all those balances and see what we need to do, that's when we've, we've come up with what we need to do for this year and what we need to do in the future. And so a month or two here or there isn't a problem. But we do need to fund it because the balance is getting below what it needs to, to be.
But the funds are in the budget now to pay for it.
These funds are in an assignment of fund balance-
Right.
-that we want to move over into the fund to actually pay claims.
The money's there. She just wants to move it into the Workers' Comp Fund.
Workers' Comp account, right. I understand that.
In the event there's claims between now and the end of the budget year.
I mean, my question is, what, what difference does it make whether it's done tonight or whether it's done next month?
Timing of when it goes in there. I think what I'm hearing is that-
Is it needed in there right now?
I'm okay with waiting till, till, to the June meeting. That's not a problem at all for me.
I think it's important for us to do it in this budget year personally-
Yes.
-so that it's not part of next year's-
Right.
-budget. I think that's the main thing.
Right, and it does impact-
That's the main thing for me.
-how things will wind up for the audit.
So we're going to do it, we're going to do it in the work session in June?
Did you say work session, or did you say regular meeting?
I said regular meeting. I think the regular meeting is the 16th of June, so it's halfway through the month. We would have time to move it. For me, Larry, it's just an opportunity for us to sit down, figure out what our comprehensive strategy is for funding things, and then once we've done that, come and allocate this $900,000. I don't think it makes sense when you're potentially 20 days away from coming up with your $225 million budget to start allocating money before you do that.
But this don't help us do it next year's budget.
The $981 doesn't. The $981 is proposed to be out of this year's budget.
We have-
The $300 and the $460 does.
Yes.
It don't, it don't matter to me.
I mean, I'm fine doing the $981 now and going through the rest of it with the budget process because that's what we were asked to do. So, but I do have, we do have a motion on the table. So again, we'll call for a second to table this until the June 16th meeting.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay.
Can't pass, no way.
There is a motion and there is a second. Okay, all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of not tabling it?
No.
Well, not in favor of it, say no. Sorry. No.
No.
Okay, so the motion, the motion dies because it's 2-2. So we're back at looking at the agenda item. Would anyone like to make a motion, another motion on this item? I'll make a motion that we fund the $981 and go ahead and put the money in Workers' Comp.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and there's a second. All those in favor, or anybody else want to say anything? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, you said yes on that motion.
I'll say that.
So the motion will pass three to one.
It's going to be done anyway. What difference do I make?
Thank you. Okay, are you the next item, too?
The next one's meeting.
Okay. Move around my iPad. Okay, the next one is number five, resolution approving filing of an application with the LGC and authorizing the publication of the notice of intent to file.
Right. And once again, I have Steve Cordell, our bond counsel, here with us to guide us through this. It is my understanding that there has been some movement regarding previous resolutions regarding the bonds, and so.
So commissioners, what you have, which I'm sure everybody saw in the paper, Kannapolis City Schools has presented us with a request to be removed from the bond and to remove their $23 million, which for, there's two different ones. So let's talk about the K-12 first so that I don't get too confused. So Kannapolis City Schools has asked to, to be removed, and they're asking for five-year financing for Kannapolis Middle School. That would leave Royal Oaks Elementary School in at the $11 million. That would, that's the amount currently. So there is a, I'm sorry, I don't know the, the page number. We have both in front of us, or you have both of them in your agenda. One is the red line version that starts on 219 that shows the reduction from the 34 to 11 million, and some other, it's blue and red lines. Some other items are taken out, so. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions that, concerning this particular request?
I would say that, I appreciate that Kannapolis City Schools was willing to work with us on this. By accepting short-term financing, we could save almost $10 million for the taxpayers. We borrow the exact same amount and save almost $10 million to the taxpayers in interest costs. And when you start looking at what the cost of schools is, that's almost another school. And so that would be a tremendous saving for the taxpayers.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, well, I want to make two comments. One, on page 220, item number two. It says, "The aggregate amount of the proposed bond issue is found to be adequate and not excessive for its proposed purpose because preliminary reports have estimated total project cost for the public school projects to be approximately $11 million," which is, I'm reading the, the striked-out version. I do not believe that $11 million is an adequate amount. It's not excessive, that's for sure. I don't believe it's adequate to build the replacement for Royal Oaks. And so I have a concern about this particular, I have a concern about that statement because I don't think that it's adequate. The other concern I have is, yes, doing a five-year financing on that note does save a lot of money. However, that is a $4.7 million impact in the budget over the five years of that note, and we have not identified in any way, shape, or form where that $4.7 million is coming from. So I have a concern about that particular issue, which I'm sure that will come up as part of the budget process. But I do want to just point out that, and that's based on the minutes that we approved tonight and the minute, the conversations that we've had in our previous meetings about financing the $23 million over five years and the rough estimate of $800,000 worth of interest. So I'm concerned about a $4.7 million impact on the budget. But for this item, I do not feel that the $11 million is adequate. So therefore, I would vote, I will vote against this particular item. Anyone else want to make some comments? You've keyed up.
I thought that the plan, what was it, E or F, had the short-term financing in it, did it not?
It, it does. Pam, you want to come up?
I thought-
It does, it does have it in the plan. However, it does identify that there's going to be, that would, there would be some further reductions required in the budget, in the operating budget to make it work.
I thought originally it would work. I thought we talked about that one time.
Not without, it, it will work as in you can do that type of a financing. You can do a five-year financing. You can borrow the money for that project, but fiscally, you have to make the reductions in the budget in order to pay for that $4.7 million. That was some of the information we presented on April the 15th.
Let's try to see if I could find, I thought I printed it out. Sorry, I have to look through my folder and find it. I do not have the amount right in front of me of what Cabarrus County Schools said that particular facility would cost.
Right here, do you have it?
Do you have it? Okay, you found it. That's Kannapolis. Here we go.
Royal.
Okay, they, they said seven, little over $17 million is what they felt like that school was going to cost. I have no idea what that school's going to cost, but I do not think that $11 million is adequate, so.
That was $17 million to build a 1,000, was it 1,000? Actually, it was 700. And we, we looked through the capacity. That would give them 3,000 students of capacity, I think, within the next five years at the elementary school level. And there was just, it didn't make any sense to do that. I would say that, you know, it's interesting that Kannapolis City Schools accepted $23 million to build their new middle school. That is an 1,100-person middle school. When Cabarrus County Schools came to us with their request for a 900-person middle school, they asked us for $31 million. That was in October. They have not given us good estimates. I have asked them for what they are intending to build in terms of amenities. They will not give me that list. On the beginning of March, I asked them for the contract for their engineering services for the new elementary school that they're apparently, they, they told us in January that they were in a tremendous rush to build this school. I asked them in March for their engineering contract so we could see what types of things they were looking at engineering. They did not have that in March. At this point, I have asked for it again at the end of April. They have still not given it to me, which means we're four months past the allocation of that money, and they still have not even signed their engineering contract to get that school done. They told us they were in this tremendous hurry to get that school built because they want to get it open, and yet here we sit on May the 18th, and I do not have that contract. So I do not think they have given us good estimates of what the school's cost. If they would like to give that to me, I would be happy to take a look at it, but they have not given me any evidence that a replacement school for Royal Oaks would cost $17 million.
Do you have a different, oh, that's a different list. And I, like I said, I've got loads of paperwork here I didn't find. I'm taking what he has. I don't know if that's the most updated list. I'm just, yeah, I'm not certain if that's the most updated number, but I just, I don't think 11 million is the right number. And, and as has been said in our meeting, once they get it designed and bid, that if they needed more money to come back to us, it's my understanding that they can't bid it without having assurances that there's enough money available. And I don't, I just don't believe that 11 million is adequate. I don't know that 17 is correct. I'm just saying that I don't believe, I believe 11 million is, is too low, so. And that's, you know, that's just a personal opinion on the school construction. So anybody else want to make any comments or questions about this item before we ask, before I ask for a motion?
Chairman Poole, I would just say that I agree with you. I also have concerns that, that the $11 million is adequate as is spelled out in, in this resolution. Also share in the, the concerns about the, the short-term financing arrangement, which I, which I think is great if we can do that, but I am not aware of what the impact will be to services as to the cuts that we'll have to, to make to cause that to happen. So I would also not be in, in favor of passing this resolution.
Okay, so at this time, I would ask, is, is there a motion concerning this bond request of $11 million?
Madam Chairman, I'm not sure that we, we need a motion. I, I think our previous motion covers this already from April when we accounted for all of these things.
I'm going to have to ask our bond counsel. I was under the impression that we, that the requested action says motion to authorize staff to file the application for the bond- for the bonds with the local government commission, adopt associated reimbursement resolutions, and adopt and publish the appropriate notice of intent to file." So can you tell me, do we... I was under the impression we had to have some motion tonight.
You do have to take formal action. The discussions and whatever action you've taken before, it's not sufficient to start the process. So if you, as we have discussed, it's a multi-step process. This will be the first step of three, to authorize the filing of an application. And so if you want to proceed, this motion has to be adopted. I would be remiss if I did not advise you that this is a draft resolution. If members of the commission wanted to propose an amendment changing the authorized amount, changing, you know, some of the wording, then, you know, that is certainly an option that is legally available to you. I would go back and just... The one caveat, just to refresh you, because we've been working at this for a long time. In each of the resolutions, there's an initial recital of whereas clause, where the purpose or the project description is really developed. And because of some of the discussions that have been had about, you know, funding with some other sources of money, if bond proceeds were not sufficient, I've attempted to use the language that you are authorizing the bonds to finance in part. The purpose and implicit in that is that there could be other funds, which oftentimes there are, in a financing. So that's sort of the background of some of the discussions we've had about, you know, how you get the number and how this sort of ties together. But you do absolutely have to have a motion to proceed. But this... Either of the resolutions can be amended, you know, before adoption. After tonight, as we've discussed, if you proceed with a motion with a specified amount later, you can... You cannot increase that amount without starting over. You can decrease the amount as you go forward. So but that's basically... Action is required tonight, and you have the power to amend the resolutions if that's the will of the commissions or the commissioners.
Okay, well, let me ask, because obviously, we have four people here tonight and not five. In the event there is a motion that ends up in a 2-2, which means it doesn't get adopted, what happens if we don't adopt anything tonight?
Then I believe you have to come back. You are still have the petitions from the school board and from the community college. And under the statutes, you are obligated to proceed with a referendum. So if you do not take action tonight, you're still running short on time. One of the real driving factors in this is that the absentee ballots have to be available a certain number of days before the referendum. And so that's 50 days, and the Board of Elections really needs to have the final bond language 30 days before that. So basically, if you do not take action at your regular meeting tonight, it really means that you... That you're going to have to take either action at a workshop or at a special called meeting to be able to take the necessary action in time to be able to get the final ballot language to the Board of Elections. But I will advise you, but I believe you are under the continuing obligation to have a referendum, because the statutes are clear on that.
Okay. Okay, is there... Would anyone like to make a motion that includes an amount for Royal Oaks at this time?
I'll make a motion that we table it until the budget session.
Well, that's true. I forgot. I wasn't even thinking about those prior to the work session.
If you've got to take $5 million out of this budget to do the short-term financing, I'd like to see where it's coming from in the budget.
Are you... Just for clarification, is your motion to table it to May the 27th or May the 29th? Those are our two...
Either day, it don't make no difference to me.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, if I may. Just a reminder, too, that you have a school resolution and you have a separate...
Right. Yeah, we have two.
So you don't have to, you know, do the same thing on both. You can proceed with one and not with the other, so.
Right.
Okay.
If you're going to make a motion, I would prefer that you pick a date.
All right.
Can you turn your mic on?
Twenty-seven. I'll pick it May 27th.
Okay, so we have a motion to table the bond request from Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools. I'll just put them both in there in this, until the May 27th work session.
Right.
And if we do it at the work session, we would need to amend our rules if we take action that night, or if we just notice it now, is that fine? Want to ask our attorney?
That's sufficient. It's a public meeting. Yes.
Okay. So it would be put on action, an action item? That's... I mean, we could do that now with his motion. It would just... If that's what passes?
Yes.
Okay. So you would want that after the discussion that night?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, we have a motion to table this item until May the 27th and place it after our presentations in regards to the budget. Is there a second to the motion? I will second your motion. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other comment?
I would just say that we had made an agreement with Kannapolis City Schools that we would do this for them. And part of that was because when we did that long-term borrowing, it cost so much. And to do the long-term borrowing, we required a tax increase in 2017. And that was one of the things we talked about in depth on the night we made the motion. And, you know, we continually put increased taxes on our people. We do not care where they get the money from, out of their budget. We just compel them by law to do that. And I think saving them $10 million and not having a tax increase and getting Kannapolis City School, the school that they asked for, is worthwhile, and I would vote on this tonight.
I would say that I would presume that Commissioner Meesmer will be there on the 27th, so that we would have five members to be able to decide. You haven't said anything. Do you want to add anything at this time? Okay, there is a motion and a second to table. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries three to one, so we will place this on the May 27th work session. The next item we have is concerning Rowan Cabarrus Community College Advanced Technology Center. They have a request of... Or, sorry, the way that it reads at this point in time is $9 million. Let me see if I can find the page for you. Or if you know what page it's on, let me know. 233, thank you. If you will turn to... 232... 231, sorry, in mine.
Yep.
I think that's right. Yes. Okay. Thank you for the help. Okay, 231 is the resolution for Rowan Cabarrus Community College at $9 million. And if I look at page 234, again, item number two, it says, "The aggregate amount of the proposed bond issue is found to be adequate and not excessive for its proposed purpose because preliminary reports have estimated total project cost for the community college project to be approximately $9 million." They have asked for 12 and a half. And therefore, I... Likewise, in this one, I do not think $9 million is adequate. So I would open this up for discussion.
Well, I think that's one of the places where we ought to reconsider and allow them to buy the land out there and put enough in this funding to buy that land. Because if somebody else comes along and buys it, it's going to cost the county twice as much to get the land. And it makes sense to me. You'll save money in the long run if you do borrow the money, because you won't have to, you know... Eventually, somebody's going to buy it. RCC has to buy it from somebody else. They're going to pay a lot more for it than what they'll pay right now. It just seemed to me like it would make sense to go ahead and get on the land and do what needs to be done for that college out there.
I'm sorry, may I look at your paper again? Does that have that one on there, too?
Yeah, it's on there.
Sorry, I missed place that one.
Sixteen million is the total.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to make sure of. The estimate from them was building 4,000. Estimate was 12,300,000. I think I said that wrong previously. Apologize. South campus expansion and access enhancement, 3,700,000, which brings it to 16 million. Any other comments at this time?
If this is a... If purchasing that land is a priority to them, then we should come up with the money in our budget and find the money for it. Because right now, we are getting ready to heap potentially a lot of money in debt on the county people. And we have a $225 million budget. If that's a priority for us, then we should figure out how to fund that. But we can't continue to borrow and borrow and borrow. And when you're almost a half a billion dollars in debt, you have to deal with that at some point, and you lose the opportunity to do things like that when it's timed at the most opportune time, because you've made poor decisions in the past.
Yeah, and I didn't make those poor decisions. What I'm talking about is what I think will benefit the college now. Whether we borrow the money... I don't want to borrow a dime if I don't have to. I'd rather not borrow another nickel for this county. But two, when they ask for 12.3 million dollars to build that building, and we're going to give them nine, they're three million short now. I mean, unless somebody knows something I don't know. But we're talking about 3.7 million dollars to buy the land that they need out there, which is needed for that college if they're going to continue to stay there and grow. Now, if they lose the land, they're going to wind up having to move somewhere else and move everything, which is going to be a lot more cost in the long run, is what I'm looking at. And whether we get the money out of the budget, I don't care where it comes from. If there's any way to go ahead and purchase... In fact, I'd rather them buy the land than to build a building.
Well, one of the things the college does is it has different facilities all over Cabarrus County. So the idea that this land is absolutely essential, I think, is belied by the fact that they have a cosmetology school that's somewhere else. They've got a law enforcement center that's right over here. They've got their other technology building that's up on 29. They've got their campus in Salisbury. So the idea that this campus is going to be strangled by not purchasing this land, I think, is not borne out in the facts of the situation.
Well, it depends on who you talk to.
Okay. Do you want to make any comments at this time?
Well, I would just say that I think Commissioner Burridge's comments make a lot of sense, that potentially, this is going to be a much more expensive proposition down the road. You know, with some of the recent industrial announcements that we've heard in the county, I think that this advanced technology training facility is probably going to be extremely valuable to us as we try to prepare local folks for job opportunities that may be available. So I would be in favor of the original request that includes those things.
And just to comment, my hang-up on these is the word adequate. And I think that if, as we move through a process, it's my understanding, is that what we do tonight can't be increased. So if we get to a point where there isn't enough money there and we have a problem, that was my concern. But I also will agree, and I would be very hopeful, that once the project is bid, it will come in lower, and we won't borrow the full amount. I would very much be in favor of that. I just am concerned that there won't be enough there. And with 4.7 for Kannapolis Middle School and the money that we need for other projects that's already been identified, that I don't want to have them short and us not be able to do what we should do out there. And I would agree with the comments made. I think the thing about the community college is, if we look at when the history of Cabarrus County, we lost the mills, we've lost tobacco. Every time those huge employers left us, we had a lot of people that needed jobs, and they did work key assessments, they did retraining, they helped people get the education they needed to find those other jobs. And that's where I think that that's very important for what Rowan Cabarrus Community College does. As I understand the scope of the project in advanced manufacturing, we very much would like to see advanced manufacturing. It's a push for the state of North Carolina, and they're going to have to have it in place in order to be able to use it. So at this time, I would ask, is there... As I understand from bond counsel, what's before us is 9 million. I'm going to turn back to you, Commissioner Burridge, since you had mentioned it. Is there a different number that you want to place in a motion? Yes, sir?
If I may, Madam Chairman. If you are going... The 9 million is just for the building. So there's really two parts. Do you increase that? Second part is, do you expand the project description to include the land? And so there'll be... Need to be an amendment to the... To include... A motion to include, to amend the purpose, to include that project as well, plus the dollar amount of the increase in the bonds.
But that can all be one motion?
That can all be one motion, absolutely.
So I'll turn back. Based on your earlier comments, do you have a motion that you'd like to make?
Does the county have the cash to buy the land, 3.7 million?
We have cash, but it's in your fund balance, but you're getting kind of low, and there's money in there for emergencies. So yes, there is cash there, but it would not be recommended at this time to make the decision to use that cash.
How much cash are we talking about?
I don't have it in front of me. I can have it for you for the first work session if you need it at that time.
I mean, I'd rather pay cash for it than go to borrow any money for it myself. And, you know, if we come up with some emergencies, we can borrow money for the emergencies.
Well, you can't do that as part of the bond. I mean, that would have to be something completely different.
No, you can't do it as part of the bond.
Borrow me.
I'd say if we can pay cash for the land, then give them... Instead of nine, give them 12. And if they do it for nine, then we saved a three.
Yeah, if it comes in lower, then you don't spend money that's not part of the...
You don't have to take the bonds. The thing is with the state, if you put the bond out there for 9 million and the job comes back at 11.4, then they won't issue the bonds, because you've got to have the rest of the cash from somewhere.
Yeah, I don't think they can even go out for bid without us guaranteeing that we cover whatever the difference is. That was my understanding. Is that right? I mean, I keep hearing that. We can't go out for bid until we have...
I don't know why you can't bid a job, because you never know what the job's going to be till you get it bid.
I think you can go out for bid, because you're trying to figure out, you know, how much it's going to cost. But again, if you do that, and it turns out, as Commissioner Burridge has correctly stated, you know, if you have a lower authorized bond amount, then before the local government commission will let you actually issue even the amount of bonds authorized, you're going to have to come up with a balance. So as we've talked before, if you authorize a larger dollar amount, still don't have... You still have to come... This board has to come back and take a subsequent action to specifically authorize how much is going to be issued in debt. And at that point in time, the local government commission is involved in that process, too. And if you have 12 million authorized and the bids come in and there are only 10, they won't let you issue but 10. And the other two just sits there. It can be repealed at that point in time. But, you know, you can always issue less, but you get to a point where if you don't have the bond authorization, you do have to come up with the additional funds before you can go forward, even with what you have authorized, so.
And, I mean, the whole point of this is just having a vote on the November ballot. We don't... If it doesn't pass, then we're back at square zero. Right. Do you want to make a motion? I don't know. I don't want to put words in your mouth if you want to make a motion.
Well, I mean, I'd like to be sure that we do have this cash to buy the land. And we can't be sure of that tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Only motion I'll make would be to table it to the 27th.
Okay. Are you making that as a motion?
I'll make a motion to table it to 27th, when we find out where this 3.7 million dollars comes from.
Okay. There is a motion to table. Are there any other comment? Or is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion to table it. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
The only comment that I would make is we... The only comment that I would make is we talk about the fact that we are not required to borrow this amount of money. But I think if you look at the projects that we've completed in the past, whether it be the jail at 118 million dollars, or the Health Alliance Building, or some of the schools that we've built, when you authorize that amount of money to be borrowed, the project will meet the amount of money that you need to be borrowed. And so this project was originally budgeted at 10 million dollars in our capital improvement fund. That's what we had originally budgeted at. The 9 million dollars, we had also said that we would provide 2 million dollars also to them. And so it was going to be 11 million dollars. We were going to pay part of it with cash. Do that pay-as-you-go, as we talked about. It would only be 15% pay-as-you-go cash on that. That's not a tremendous amount. And there was some responsibility in that. And I think we're abandoning that responsibility and going 100% debt on a lot of this stuff. And it's easy to do as government. I mean, you can tell how we got a half a billion dollars in debt because it's easy to do. But I think we'd be more prudent to make some wiser decisions here and not burden our people with 100% debt on this.
I'm not trying to burden the taxpayers with any more debt on, no more debt we have to have. But all I want to do is, 53 years of being in construction, I know how costs are going up every day. I know how the increases in the last year. Economy's picking up. A lot of building going on now. You can't hardly find an electrician. And a lot of carpenters you can't find. A lot of jobs out there that people are trying to get help for and can't get it. And that's going to drive the cost of these buildings up. It won't be built until, what, 2016 or 17? So by the time you get there, I don't know what you're going to have. I just don't think you're going to have enough money to build these buildings when you do get there, though.
If I may, Commissioners, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but I just want to make sure that everyone's apprised of all the options that are there. And at least as to the community college, well, even the schools. The action you're taking tonight is really, is the preliminary authorization proceed. Now, there is a notice that's going to get published in the newspaper that'll have a project description and a dollar amount. But as we've talked before, as you go through the process, you have to take two more actions. You have to introduce bond orders and then you have to adopt bond orders. And those will be in June and July. If you were to decide to go with the expanded definition of the purpose, include the land and the higher dollar amount, at your next meeting, when you introduce your bond order, you could drop those out. You can change, you could drop the purpose out, you can decrease the bond amount. You can't go up, you can decrease it. And once you introduce your bond order, you're sort of stuck on your purposes. You do come back in July and then you actually adopt the bond order at that point. And you could still continue to drop, reduce the authorized amount. I don't believe you can change the purpose at that point in time. You'd have to leave the project in, but you could reduce the dollar amount. If you wanted to just get started, and that way you can fine-tune it over your next, you know, couple of meetings in terms of what you're actually going to go forward with. And I'm just, I'm not making any recommendations one way or another. I just want you, the Commissioners, to all know, those are the options that are open to you. Because we have been working at this for a long time and, you know. Thanks.
Hey, well, we do have a motion. You still good with your motion after his last comments?
Yep.
Okay. So we do have a motion, and we have a second to table this item until the May 27th, which again, we would put it after the budget work session part and do it after the K-12 part. It seemed logical to me. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
You said yes. Motion carries three to one. Okay. Next, we have, if you'll go back to page 53. This was, Jason, this was the item that you wanted to move? And Ms. Dubois is here.
Yeah, Ms. Farrington's not here this evening.
Really, I just had a question about the Capitol County, Cabarrus County Capital Reserve Capital Project Budget Ordinance that I would like to speak about for a second. And while we had it on our agenda, I wanted to ask about it. It is relative to the conversation that we just had, which is on page 61, we have this money set aside there for the elementary school and Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement. We have 6.3 million dollars in county facility projects and another 3.2 million dollars in park projects. And I would like to work, at least look at that in the work session in terms of what exactly those projects are and have them identified. My understanding, at least in the park projects, is that 990,000, I believe, is scheduled to be spent at Camp Spencer to knock down and replace those buildings out there. I personally have rented those facilities out two times in the last two months, bring my family there, and they're in tremendous shape. So the idea that we would spend a million dollars right now to knock those buildings down, when we are talking about borrowing an increasing amount between 40 and 50 million dollars, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, you know, and then if you flip over to page 65 or 64 at the Lumax Farm Project, it looks like we've spent about 250,000 dollars out there. I sat down with the director of the Lumax Farm. He told me there are seven farmers learning how to farm out there. So to spend 250,000 dollars out there for seven people learning how to farm, I think, is just not a good use of our money when we've got the needs that we've been talking about tonight. And so I would like to go through this capital budget and let's look and see if we can't reprioritize some of these funds so that they can go into our schools. To spend a million dollars at Camp Spencer to knock down a building that's there and functional right now, I mean, we've had our retreats out there in recent years. We didn't this year, but they're perfectly functional buildings when we've got some real needs in our schools and in terms of maintenance and in terms of capital construction requirements. I think we could do better with that money.
The 990,000 is no longer in the Capital Reserve Fund. It is actually in a construction fund. The board had approved it and transferred it over. So it is, what you are looking at is the project ordinance for the Capital Reserve Fund. That is the history of the fund. That money's already been transferred out. So it's in another construction fund that's a multi-year fund that, I'm not sure how that would work, but if the board can undo that transfer, I think we already have an architect for that project.
That's correct.
So I'm not exactly sure. I've never done that before. I'm not saying it can't be done, but I don't know, once you go that way, how to come backwards.
We can have those answers for you.
So we'd have to call and get some information. But those monies have been transferred out that you are referring to. This particular agenda item is strictly to shore up all these funds that were within different projects that have restrictions on them of how they're used and just to get the budgets fixed for auditing purposes at June 30th. It's not to expend any of this money, just to get the budgets where the interest earnings have come in or additional collections have come in, to shore up those budgets so that should the board make a decision on what they want to do with some of this money, it's ready for them to make that decision and move it.
Sure.
And I'll just go ahead and make a motion to pass the requested, I'll make the requested motion that would have been on the consent agenda. But I had questions about those and I wanted to get those discussed while we were looking at this capital budget. It was on our agenda and it was something that I felt like, particularly in light of, you know, the bond maybe increasing in dollar amounts and borrowing 50 million dollars, that we need to look at every option that we can look at to keep that down. And that was somewhere that I felt like we might have some options.
If you would like to provide us a list of what you're talking about, we can go find out where all those monies are located and then find out a process, if there is one available, on how to reverse it, if that's what you're looking for.
Sure. On page 61, in particular, county facility projects at 6.331 million and park projects at 3.243 million. Those would be the big ones.
You're reading the ordinance?
I am reading attachment, it's page F3 of the attachment.
Section D.
It's in the ordinance. It's on the ordinance on page 61.
That's the only thing I don't have is the ordinance. I have the budget revisions, but no ordinance.
But this 3.2 million has already been set aside for the parks?
It could already be set aside. Most likely, it's already been set aside, but it could also be spent. So that's what I wanted to know, was what numbers you were talking about. And we'll go trace them through the system and find out where they're at.
Okay.
It could be spent or it has been spent.
She's going to find out for us.
It could be both. It could have already been spent or it may be sitting there waiting to be spent. We just got to figure out where it's, what stage it's at.
Those projects were approved, is what you're saying. They previously were approved, some of which have already been completed, some of which may be in the process.
So we'll go track each one of those balances down and tell you what it was used for and whether it's been expended or not and where it's located.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the multi-year budget amendment and related revised project ordinances.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, I will turn over to the county manager.
As is custom, the manager reads the budget message. At the end of the message, or at the end of the meeting, the board will be distributed your copy of the proposed budget in the electronic form. I think everybody requested electronic and written, so we'll have that for you after the meeting. That will be for you guys to review over the next week or so. Feel free to send questions, comments to us during that time, and then we will start the process on the 27th. So we'll go from there. Honorable Chairman and members of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, I am pleased to submit to you the recommended Cabarrus County operating budget for fiscal year 15. This budget was prepared in accordance with the general statutes of North Carolina and the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The Board of Commissioners' mission, vision, and strategic goals provided valuable structure and guidance in the preparation of this balanced budget. Included in this comprehensive documents are the expected revenue projections and proposed operational expenses for fiscal year 2015. Beginning in October 2013, county staff worked together to implement a 360-degree review of the relevancy, the effectiveness, and the efficiency of all Cabarrus County programs and services. This review included research, evaluation, and consideration of changes in staffing levels and consolidation of departments and privatization of programs and/or services. As in the past, some of these considerations are included in the proposed budget. At the core of this budget is a balance of identified public needs and general operations that will enable Cabarrus County to move forward in the best interest of our residents. I recommend for consideration a general fund budget of 209,684,590, which represents a 1.77% decrease in spending from the fiscal year 2014 adopted budget. To fund the budget as proposed will require the adoption of an ad valorem tax rate of 70 cents. The proposed budget maintains existing levels or lower levels of spending in most departments and provides for growth in areas with increased service demands in order to meet the demands of future needs of the county. Short-term economic and operational impacts on the county budget. Number one, we are fortunate that the economy is experiencing positive economic growth, which is estimated to increase ad valorem and sales tax revenues by 4 million dollars in FY15. Based on past history of actual collections, projected estimates are less conservative than in the past. They do, however, meet the statutory requirements. We expect the change in sales tax regulations of the state to improve sales tax revenues, but this is very difficult to measure without historical numbers to compare. Although our current year experience does not appear to meet the revenue volume projected for 2014, using projections from the state and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, we expect the economy and the sales tax revenues to grow approximately 3% for fiscal year 2015. Number two, for fiscal year 2014, one-time budgeted revenues related to lottery funds, the Tax and Tag Together Program for the Division of Motor Vehicles revenues, and debt proceeds totaling 7.8 million dollars are excluded from the fiscal year 2015 budget. This creates most of the net decrease of revenues for fiscal year 2015, which is the 1.77%. Number three, during the board's retreat in January of this year, Professor John Chester shared current trends and projections of expected growth in our county and throughout the metropolitan region. He magnified the importance of preparing for the impact of this growth and the resulting increase in need for public services, especially for the growing aging population. Number four, Cabarrus County has experienced an increase in residential, commercial, and industrial growth over the past year. This has resulted in increased activity in our registered deeds and planning and developed apartments. This supports Professor Chester's theory of continued growth in construction and population during the upcoming years. Certainly, the recent sale of the Philip Morris site and the recent announcement of multiple industrial distribution slash logistical buildings bode well for the economy of Cabarrus County and its future. We eagerly anticipate the growth and employment opportunities that these projects will bring to the county. Number five, Cabarrus County's current unemployment rate is approximately 5.8%. This decrease is very encouraging. However, we will need to continue to create more economic and employment opportunities for our citizens. To do this, our economic and workforce development efforts must continue to market our county, assist existing businesses and industries to grow, train our workforce, and remain flexible enough to adjust to the ever-changing needs of the market. Our community can only achieve this through the combined efforts of our local governments, public and private school systems, and our community college system. Number six, the financial impact of the federal health care and state Medicaid reform is unknown at this time. Increased eligibility in both programs has the potential to strain already maximized workloads and service levels within our Human Services Department and the Cabarrus Health Alliance. The implementation of the NC FAST and NC TRACK systems by the state have resulted in loss of efficiencies in our local human services operations. Our Department of Human Services is evaluating workloads and workflow in an effort to improve our efficiency and our ability to provide services in a timely manner. Number seven, operational and capital needs of Cabarrus County schools, Kannapolis City Schools, and Rowan Cabarrus County Community College have continued to grow. As we move forward with the future budget discussions, the county will need to establish a comprehensive funding approach that will have to balance the needs and time constraints of the school systems and the ability of the county to fund in an appropriate manner. Number eight, the governor has outlined a proposal that will give new school teachers a base salary increase to $33,000 a year in fiscal year 15 and a second increase to move their base salary to $35,000 in fiscal year 16. In addition, all the remaining teachers will receive a 1% salary increase. The fiscal impact of this proposal on our locally funded positions is included in the proposed FY15 budget. And I realize, as we were finalizing the budget documents, the government has changed, or the governor has changed some of those goals. So we will update those as we go through. Number nine, as the economy continues to improve and service expectations of our citizens continue to grow, we must continue to maintain competitive salaries and benefits of our employees to avoid increased turnover and training costs. At this time, per board direction, the annual retreat, at the annual retreat, the FY2015 does not include cost of living or merit raises. However, it does include $100,000 for salary adjustments for positions considered to be below market rate. Staff has carefully weighed the aforementioned factors and considered their impact on the county program, services, staffing, and productivity. The proposed budget ensures that staffing levels, programs, and services and their associated expenditures will address increased workloads, create market competitive salaries, and meet the needs and expectations of our citizens. In an effort to create balance, the proposed budget includes some revisions to county operations. These are the budget highlights and priorities. As Cabarrus County continues to grow, our staff appropriately and diligently implements new and innovative strategies to achieve expected outcomes with available and sometimes limited resources. The proposed budget to maximize these outcomes for our citizens by adding a new branch of our library in the Midland Community or the southern Cabarrus area of the county and an additional EMS station in the Concord Mills Speedway area, Weddington Road area. Both facilities are scheduled to open in the fourth quarter of the proposed fiscal year. Number two, the recommended budget provides for the required workers' compensation costs to be funded by the current expense budget rather than assigning future fund balance to ensure available funds as demands arise. This funding will be phased in through the general fund budget over the next two years. As a result of the normal budget review process, staff, beginning back in October of 2013, staff has worked to reduce departmental current expenses by approximately 2.7 million dollars. Number four, additional funding amounting to $2,696,438 is proposed... Number four, additional funding amounting to $2,696,438 is proposed for annualized school salary increases and increase in building maintenance for both school systems. Five, the employee health plan design changes approved by the Board of Commissioners implemented in fiscal year 2013 and 2014 have helped reduce claims costs and avoid plan increases. Cost avoidance through plan changes in fiscal 13 and 14 were approximately $3.7 million. In addition to those changes, or as a result of those changes, employees experienced higher deductibles and lost available copay resulting in the requirement of more of their out-of-pocket payments. However, those changes did create the situation this year where we are not requesting additional insurance because of the claim activity. Number six, proposed increase in the health plan funding for the amount of $234,000 is related to the Affordable Care Act. Seven, as you will note in the five-year plan, in future years, the county will experience more funding challenges as we begin providing additional capital and current expense funding to the schools. Cabarrus County's economy continues to trend in a positive direction, showing signs of increased revenues and employment opportunities in the county. While we hope to enjoy this trend for many years to come, the growth will also bring more residents and greater demands on county programs and services. The proposed budget meets these demands for the next fiscal year by streamlining operations and balancing the needs of the county and school operations with the available financial resources in a way that allows both operations remain fiscally sustainable. In closing, I would like to thank our entire staff for their commitment to maintain and always strive to improve the program and services we provide on a daily basis with limited resources. It is only through their hard work and dedication that the board's vision and goals are achieved in an effective and efficient manner. I would like to especially thank Ann Wilson, our Finance Director, Parth Mehta, our Budget Analyst, Susan Farrington, our Assistant Finance Director, Becky Crabtree, our Accountant, Fundy Covington, our Human Resources Director, Pam Du Bois, Deputy County Manager, Jonathan Marshall, Deputy County Manager, for their hard work throughout the last six months in preparing this budget. Respectfully submitted, Mike Downs, County Manager.
Okay, thank you. We will get that after the meeting, Commissioners. And it says we need to schedule a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2015 Cabarrus County budget for Monday, June 16, 2014, at 6:30 or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard. So, we will be placing the public hearing on our agenda for June 16. Right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Just want to make sure, just to give everybody a notice tonight that that's when the public hearing portion will be. Okay, Commissioners, next we have appointments to boards and committees. You'll look on page 242 for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory-
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Sorry, I didn't have this. Do we need to make a motion?
I think it would be preferable to go ahead and entertain a motion to schedule that public hearing.
Sorry, and I didn't have my microphone on, so I apologize for that. Okay, so let me back up. May I have a motion then to schedule a public hearing for Monday, June 16, 2014, for the budget?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, back to Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. At this time, we need a motion to remove Paula Brandl from the committee roster and thank her for her service. Her term ended, or ends, May 31, and she has, her wish is not to be appointed to another term. And also, a motion to reappoint Joy Starnes to the committee for a three-year term ending March 31, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, on page 246. At this time, I accept a motion to appoint Emily McKay for the food preparation position, and Katie Warren for the finance position to the Food Policy Council for three-year terms ending December 31, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on page 252. At this time, we need a motion to reappoint Robert "Bob" Ritchie as an at-large representative to the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017. I served with Bob on that commission, so I am happy to make the motion to appoint him. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. In your packet, Commissioners, you have a number of reports, and now we have time for general comments by board members. And honestly, I cannot remember if I have given this to you guys before, so I'm going to give you each one, pass those down. I am on the Centralina Workforce Development Board. For those people in our community that are looking for jobs, they have a website. It's www.centralinacareerheadlight.com. And if anybody here wants one of these, because you know somebody, I have a few extra ones in my bag tonight, I'd be happy to share with you. The good thing about this website is it's for positions that are in our area. So, sometimes when you go on, if you go on the state's website, you might find what looks like a great position, and it's way down east or way up in the mountains. This one uses that same information, but it aggregates it, so it's for this region, not Cabarrus County, but the Centralina region, which is like a Tin County region. So, I wanted to share this with all the Commissioners so that you can see, this is one of the things that the Workforce Development Board has worked on, and you're obviously welcome to share that website with anyone. So, Commissioners, any other comments that you, anybody would like to have? Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a comment to the citizens out there who received this in the mail. The minutes, I got them right here, was 10:31, and I'd like to ask the county attorney, Mr. Cook, when this was done, was this not done according to a contract that was already given by the previous board?
Yes, that is correct.
So, Chris Meister myself did not give anybody $151,000, is that correct?
That is correct. The action that was taken in, I thought it was September, maybe it was October of 2011, was based on a prior contract, and then a new contract was then executed at that point. But the action that was taken was based on a prior contract that went back some years.
Well, I just want the public to know, one citizen stood across the parking lot down at the senior center on Election Day and hollered back across the parking lot, wondering how much $151,000 I put in my pocket. You know, it makes you feel when you know it's a lie, and people just lie about you. That's the honest campaign to run.
Anyone else want to make? Yes, sir?
I just have one comment. This was paid for by Cabarrus Jobs Now, and the newspaper says, Commissioner Morris, you founded that entity. So, this one here was paid-
There's another one sent out, too. It should be called Lies Now.
I don't know what it should be called, but it says that you founded that entity with Ms. Honeycutt, so I don't know if you have anything to say about this flyer that has Chris and Larry on it, Commissioner Morris.
Hey, are there any other general comments? Commissioners, we do have need for a closed session tonight. We do need to invite Tony Harris to join us. I'm looking to see where he is. We need a motion to go into closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, and to invite Tony Harris into closed session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I probably won't do that, but I'll make it.
Thank you for making a motion to go into closed session. We don't want to stay in here all night long. I will second the motion to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to thank all of you for staying with us tonight, and hope that you have a great Memorial Weekend. Thank you all.